Meeting is called to order at 7:02. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, welcome back, everybody, and I hope everyone enjoyed the windstorm. I did because we didn't lose power, so I was happy. Not really, because it was very noisy. All right. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of February 26, 2019 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Okay. Oh, my gosh, this thing. All right. May I have a motion and a second that the board approve the following consent agenda, including approval of minutes of February 5, 2019, as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. No treasurers report tonight. Special reports.
Yeah, we actually have three special reports this evening. We have Gary Huffman from Campus Construction here to talk about the 2018 Elementary Additions Project update, and then we also have Jamie Myrna and Nicole Whitehead, who are going to do a textbook presentation for our business class, and then Nicole Whitehead will stay up there to give us the program review of STEAM. And so I'll ask Gary to join us for our 2018 Elementary Additions Project update.
Thank you for allowing me here tonight.
Hi, Gary.
What happened?
A slide.
You've got a clicker right there.
Oh, I do? I'm sorry.
No, you're good. It should work.
Maybe.
Right arrow, right?
Yes.
Or I can push a button.
On the side, there's a button, if that helps.
Got you. Off to on. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Sorry. So we're going to talk about a couple of things this evening, and the first one is the security project, and that is largely represented by door replacement in different locations throughout the entire district, at all the schools. We are not replacing all doors, about 150 doors in strategic locations. And then signage, which everybody has seen, that was Ellen McNiff's efforts, and he did a spectacular job, I think. The signage, the new signage around the campuses is beautiful. So the doors are, we've been working on it since November, and we've run into a few issues where the doors were, some doors, were mismeasured, and we've had to reorder them, the contractors had to reorder them and replace them, so we're working our way through those issues. I would anticipate by the end of March, we should be done with that. The chiller project, I know it's 20 degrees out, and we're not thinking about cooling yet.
Yeah.
But we're taking this opportunity to get it done. So as we all know, the chiller saw its better days and was unable to do its work last year, so the district authorized the project to replace the chiller, which we've been working on all winter. And we are, I gave my promise to have cooling in time for exams in June. I'm very optimistic we will meet that goal. The chiller equipment itself, the two barrels, they're very large cylindrical pieces of equipment, and the cooling tower itself have arrived. The barrels are actually installed in the chiller itself, is the chiller towers in Rochester, so. And then we have another significant piece of electrical equipment called Switchgear that comes in April, and the chiller equipment will all be piped and ready to go. The Switchgear arrives here in April, and we'll put that in, and then I'm planning on doing commissioning latter part of May to have cooling ready for June. So that project is tracking very well, and that's right on schedule. The third item tonight is speaking to the additions project, where we will be adding classroom additions at Cobble's, Indian Landing, and Scribner. And right now, on February 11th, just a few days ago, SED, or SEI submitted to SED, SEI the Architect, the documents, the drawings and specifications for review by the State Education Department. The district has authorized a third-party review, and the reason for that is the review time, if we go through, directly through SED, is on mechanical, the architectural's run about four months, but mechanical's running around 42 to 45 weeks. So it would not come out until sometime next year, probably January. So we are in the midst of an extremely challenging, very difficult bidding climate right now, and there is an enormous amount of construction work out right now, and has been for about a year, and we don't see any letup in that. That's compounded by the fact there are not enough people in the trades who can do the work. I had a conversation with a mechanical contractor today, who is saying that they are pulling people out of retirement to try and meet these projects' demands. It's both public and private sector, so we've seen construction prices skyrocket, double-digit increases is not uncommon, 20%, 30%, 40% in some cases, and that's because not enough people, too much work. So we are taking advantage of the third-party review that SED has provided, and that is, it's a pay-for-review, and it expedites the review process. So instead of that 40, 45-week review, we get it down to about, oh, maybe 16 to 20 weeks, so we have that. The goal is, as this outline shows on the screen, is that we want to be in a position to go out to bid in August, because we are monitoring the bid market and seeing there are projects coming out in the fall that we don't want to compete with, so we're trying to get out ahead of that curve. So this third-party review takes advantage of that and gives us that ability to be in control of getting this project out to bid and trying to get more competitive numbers from contractors. And then we are looking to bid, actually open bids around the 1st of October, and everything is prefaced with anticipated, because it is at review, so that will be driven by when it comes out of SED, and that's why we say anticipated. So these are our best estimates right now of timing. Construction, we would anticipate to start approximately one year from now, March 1st of next year, and we will have the additions ready for students for the start of this following school year in '21. So these all take time, as we all realize, this project was voted last year, and wanted to go through the design and the review time, and then the bid time, and be able to start construction, it takes a while. So this gives you an idea of where we are tracking right now on the additions project.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sorry. Questions?
Board members, any questions for Gary? Barb?
I just have a comment. My dance studio says thank you very much for getting the cooler in by, because our recital is June 8.
So.
And they've already been complaining to me about, and I said, no, we're taking care of it. So now I can firm it up.
Yes, you can. Yes, you may.
If I could just follow up a little bit on what Gary had to say about the bidding environment, I see it not from Gary's side, but from the business official's side, and you know, my peers are struggling with this as well. So you know, there's a neighboring school district that just recently opened bids on a multiple elementary school construction project, and their decision after bid opening was that they're going to essentially not do one of the elementary schools that they had promised, do the work at that school, because there just wasn't enough cash in the project authorization to be able to do it. So they made what I think's a rash, very rational decision, that rather than try and, you know, do 1,000 cuts everywhere, they would take one school and not do anything, but that's the kind of very hard choice, I think, that people are having to make. So in our project, you'll remember that we have the elementary additions, part of it was the chiller, chiller's done and bid and gone. So we have elementary additions coming up, and then we also had building condition survey work at Bay Trail and the high school. There was money in for that. So for us, you know, we know well that the elementary additions are the part of this project that has to go forward, that has to happen. So the amount of building condition survey work that we'd hope to accomplish is what's going to have to give. If, you know, we'll see where we get when we get to bid, we know that there was work already that we had intended to do, that, you know, there's, I think at a previous meeting, Gary explained how the budgeting process works for this. So we did, do we do, it gets budgeted multiple times as we go through the process. Once for, well, more than once, but once, when we go out to the public and ask for an authorization, there's a budget that supports that. Then you get in, after the public says yes, you get into the nitty-gritty of design, and lots of things come up, and time goes on, and other budgets are done, budgets done as those documents are refined further and further and further, and then in time for submission to SED. And so as we've gone through that process, these escalations have been occurring, we've been trying to keep up with that, and we've already had to essentially give up on the idea, we're still, we've still got it in, I think we still intend to get, but some of the pieces of BCS work have already been set aside. So there is in this year's budget, an anticipated transfer to capital, we hope would help with this, but we're not sure, we're not through our budget process yet, and we talked about that at the Capitol meeting. So we'll see how this goes. But in the meantime, we're just going to try and move forward as quickly as we can and see if we can't at least control what we can control. We can't control how many people go in the trades, you know, that's not our job, but we can to the extent, and we can't control SED or their lead times. We're trying to do the best we can with that, with the expedited review, and then you'll recall, we were initially not planning to do that. We switched to that and decided to do that because of our analysis of, and lots of conversation around what other schools are doing. You know, in a challenging environment, we don't want to be out competing with other schools at the same time. There's already not enough people to go around. We don't, you know, we don't want what might be a more attractive project, or might not, we don't know. So we just thought it was best to, we wanted to give you this update, let you know where we're going, that it's still going on. We don't have bad news, but we're concerned, and so we just wanted to share that.
And we're being prudent, and we're just recognizing what the market is. Our management firm is bidding work, putting work out to bid all the time, and we're just seeing this consistently, and we've been seeing it since February of last year. The tariffs had an impact, and now just the economy is just doing really well, and people have the incentive to do work, private and public sector, and it's just incredible. I haven't seen this, I've done this for 30 years and never saw it like this. It's off the charts. And that district you're speaking of probably was.
One of yours.
Yeah. And it was, and I had to make that plea to the district to take that school out. If they hadn't, they would not be awarding contracts next week. So, and then in another district that's bidding next week, we've, I made a plea to take two schools out of five that were charted to have work on, and we've literally taken two out. And I know that the district is in a position where they made that promise to the voters, but if they didn't take those two schools out, I'm afraid they would not be awarding bids when they open next week because of the market.
Can I ask a question on that? So what does that mean? I mean, if the school, if we have to make really significant changes, what is, do we go back to the voters?
You could. You have choices. There's always choices. You could go back to the voters and, you have two, well, you have choices, but not an unlimited amount, right? So the voters have authorized a certain level of funding for that work. You don't have to do all the work, you have to stay within the funding.
Right.
So if you want to do more work, you can ask for an additional authorization. In part, and in a very small way, that's what we're doing with part of our budgeted transfer this year, because as part of budget approval, that's the approval there. But if you had a much more significant need, you could ask for a second referendum, and there's, I think, another one of your schools that I can think of on the West Side, that as a result of a number of things, went out with a second referendum and said, no, you know, we asked for this, and here's why, and you said yes, and we appreciate that and thank you, but now we need more, and here's why. That's a, can be a difficult conversation, but in that case, it was successful, the public understood and approved additional funding. So that's a possibility. But again, you're back to the water hole, and in a case like ours with elementary additions, we know the kids are coming, right? So it's just, you're slowing everything down.
We set our priorities, and like in these other districts, we're just prioritizing what's the most important thing, and then recognizing that we're going to bid the most important, then look at our budget, what do we have left, and we may just have, we will go back to those two schools or that school, but it probably will be a smaller scope.
Right. So but what's, are we obligated to do something from a, from a legal standpoint, like if we go out and say we're going to do all these additions, and then all of a sudden we're like, oh, my God, we can only do two, three, whatever? If we're in that situation, what?
Are we obligated to do it? No.
No, I mean, are we, what are we obligated to, so if we make that decision that we have to cut, make cuts back in what we thought, because we're going to stay within the funding, what are we obligated to do with the voters? Nothing? Because they're already.
I think, I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, is, so if, talk of a district that wants to put additions on three schools, and then due to the reasons Gary talked about, we realize financially we can only do two of the three, you know, we do not have to go back out to vote with the community.
Right, because we have a number.
But our obligation would be to be, as we always try to be, as transparent and communicate. So through board meetings, I would imagine, a public meeting, talk about why we have to make the decision that we're making in order to fit within the budget that the voters approve for us.
Gotcha. Okay.
There's a legal obligation there, but there's also that community and that communication obligation that's actually the harder of the two, right? That's the tricky part.
But as Mark said, I think our safety valve in this project is the BCS.
Right.
I think, I'm reasonably confident we're fine with the additions, it's the BCS that may have to be scaled back to preserve the ability to do all three schools' additions.
And frankly, nobody's, I don't, Alan cares deeply, and people will care, right? They'll say, why doesn't this work? But it's, but it doesn't have the, yeah, yeah.
Mark, did you have a question?
I think.
Was it answered?
At least I kind of covered it. Basically, the question was going to be about what are our constraints, and you pretty much covered that.
Okay. John?
Yeah, there's, I know there's national cooperatives for goods. Are there national or regional cooperatives for services that may help alleviate the issue with the workforce, or local workforce?
We do look at those, and we have used them in the past, and something that has just recently come to our attention in December was roofing, which never was before, is now. It's a national partner, and national cooperative partners out of Texas, but they use local roofing contractors. Specifically, they're using Elmer Davis, which is a preferred contractor to many school districts. So we are using that recently, actually had a meeting with them today for another district to pursue that cooperative agreement that they have in place to do roofing. So yes, we look at every opportunity. Absolutely.
I think the, and those opportunities are great, because they offer multiple ways to get the work done.
Yes.
The real challenge, I think, behind all this, besides just the volume of work in a heating-up economy, that's part of it, but you know, the economies have warmed up before. I mean, that's, we've been here before, and we've not been, and it hasn't been like this. So in, when I think about it, I think the thing that seems new to me about, in this regard, is just the lack of people in the trades. The union halls are empty, there's no one there to do the work. And so in schools that require, you know, in New York, in schools that require union labor or prevailing wage labor, if there's no one to do it, how you get there doesn't help, right? And that's the problem we've been running into. Alan has been running into it with much, much smaller projects. You know, contractors who for years have been very reliable for us, that we have a good relationship with, who are, who, and we're a good, you know, we hope to be a good, a good school to work for, and they're saying, we'd love to, we just, thanks, but no, we can't. And you know, it's, so it is, it's on not just large projects, but small, it's proving difficult.
And it's not just union, it's non-union, too.
Right.
There is just no one available. And it's February, that is unheard of, January, February.
Yeah, there should be people waiting to.
There should be people waiting, and there isn't. And it's not going to change for a very long time, because people are aging out, retiring, and there's not a lot of young people coming in to fill their space.
That being said, Gary was at Penfield High School Career Day before February break, talking to folks about the trades.
Well, that's good to hear.
Got to do something.
Did you spark any, do you think you sparked any interest in anybody?
I did. I did. I love it. I love doing these. Any opportunity I get, if somebody invites me, I go. And I, the kids picked what speaker they wanted to go listen to. I was impressed with the numbers that showed up. We had a good turnout.
So why don't you just explain for me quickly how an apprentice, say, electrician program would work? What would my daughter face as an apprentice electrician? And what might she make when she got out?
Well, it's funny, because we talked about this at Career Day, and one of the teachers spoke, and said, that's more than I make.
Yeah.
So the IBEW, which is the local electrical union, you would reach out to them, and any union right now is, will throw themselves at somebody who is interested, and they offer apprenticeship programs, usually they're four years, and the individuals are guaranteed wage increases every year, it's built in, and under the union, they get a very good salary. So a journeyman walking out right now, hourly wage is about $40, $45 an hour. On top of that, however, is their annuity and their retirement, which are two different, but they're both, it's a retirement fund that they collect when they retire, and their health benefits, and their vacation. So the going rate now with all the bennies, and there is about $70, $75 an hour for an electrician, plumber, HVAC, mechanical, you name it. It's really good money, and they can work as much overtime as they want. And it's time and a half after 40, and it's double time on Sundays, double time on holidays. It's really good money. You could easily do six figures in the trades today.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that is amazing.
Yep.
Wow, how the tide turns.
With benefits.
I know.
With your healthcare paid and your retirement paid. It's incredible.
And you don't have to worry about AI taking your job.
You know, that's very true. Somebody just said that recently, as sophisticated, as advanced we get, you still got to have skilled labor.
And you have to have buildings to.
It's just not going away.
House people. Wow.
Gary, thank you.
Well, thanks for that really encouraging update. Boy, do we appreciate that.
Full transparency, full disclosure.
No, I know it. We've been aware of this for a while, but it's, it's kind of hard to take that in when you, when you approve a project, and then you, we might have to face that harsh reality, and you know, hopefully it'll work out, but you have to, you have to be prepared for that. It's kind of shocking.
It is, and I imagine all of you are hearing it from your peers in other districts. I would imagine it's a conversation.
And if you own a house, too, if you need a repair done, I mean, right? Yes. So we're all hearing about it.
A fellow told me recently, overhead door, he needed to replace the door in his garage at his house, and he was listening, Rowley Door, I think it was, or somebody called. They had a commercial while he's waiting on hold, and they said, we're looking for people, mechanics, to come work. We're offering a $10,000 signing bonus for anyone who's qualified.
Wow.
Overhead doors. Oh, my gosh.
Yep.
Yeah, it's crazy, because they're, it's affecting everyone.
I don't know if you're aware, I know you were here for the high school presentation at the Career Day, there is a Career Week at Bay Trail in the afternoon, where they're going to be doing the week of March 26, I think it is, or 24, I think, is the start of that week, where they're doing afternoon presentations, every afternoon, all week long. So if you'd like that information, I can make sure.
I would.
I'd get it to you. I think there's still openings, because I was just contacted today as well.
Oh, great.
So might be nice to be able to even get in pre-high school, as kids are thinking about trade opportunities and training opportunities at BOSEs and things like that.
I would, and I'd rope a few more people from my company into it as well.
There you go.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
I'll get you that.
Thank you.
On that note, dinner at the Putnam's house, you know, I'm not usually home, but maybe we can have you over, because I do have three that maybe we can get into the trades as well, after that presentation.
That'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Gary? Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Thanks, Gary. Bye-bye. And now we have Jamie Myrna and Nicole Whitehead for a textbook presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Hello.
Hi. So we are here to present for your consideration the Learn by Doing series for Microsoft Office, which is a new course that we are going to be offering next year, running for the first time. I will be speaking about that a little bit in the STEM program review update, but Mrs. Myrna is our department chair, and so she's here to also, oh, great, thanks. She's here to also just kind of explain why this is the series that we chose for this new course.
So we chose this series over the other ones that were presented to us by MCC as acceptable books, or textbook series to use. So the course will be dual-credit through MCC, and we chose the Learn by Doing over the others, because they start very basic, so it doesn't really matter if the children know Excel or not. And then as the book progresses, the rigor increases, and it's kind of at your own pace kind of thing. So we'll give the lessons, and then if someone needs to do the very rudimentary, they have lessons for that, and then they have lessons in the program as well, that can allow students to go further and investigate the different aspects. And then also, my colleague went to a CTE, which we are in the process of being approved for, meeting, and this was a series that a lot of the schools were using, and they found the most success with passing the Microsoft Office exam at the end with this series. So that was the reason we chose this one over the others that were presented to us.
And they actually have in them, as part of the online addition that comes with it, practice questions for that certification exam that Jamie was just discussing, because we'd really, our goal is to have kids take that, because that's a really marketable thing now for them to put on their resumes.
Wow. Good. Excellent.
Do you have any questions about the textbook?
Board members? Mark?
First of all, I think that's great. Microsoft Office, and those are essential career tools, and I like the fact that it's that certification. I agree with you, that's very marketable. What do we do as far as, that's an elective class, correct? What do we have in terms of required classes along these lines?
That's a great question. So I will be talking a little bit about it in the STEM program review, but we do expose all of our students to all three components, as well as some of the newer ones, such as Sway, through our computers course at the middle school. So all sixth and seventh grade students take computers for a 10-week series, and they are all shown that. In addition to that, we, Kristin Williamson. In addition to that, we, Kristen Williamson, the Director of Humanities, and myself, over the last few years, have tried to incorporate, when we, when we see an opportunity to integrate technology into a curriculum writing project, we will do so. So, for example, we were writing, this past summer, we did a lot of science writing, which I'll also talk about. And in that, we thought to ourselves, okay, well, when we're studying, say, bees, we could have children also learn and apply PowerPoint. So, we're looking for those opportunities, you know, knowing that time is, 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 is hard to find. And it's not something where we can just kind of carve out extra time in the day for those elementary students. How do we incorporate it into the content areas that we're already teaching? So, we are working right now, there is an elementary tech committee that I worked with to really outline a scope and sequence of specific skills that we want kids introduced to, and then become proficient in, K through five. But we kind of put that on hold, because the state right now, it, through the, a BOSI's group that I work with, has told us that they are actually working on state recommendations that are going to be proposed to the Board of Regents for adoption in the fall. So, rather than put something out and then say, "Oh, wait," the state says, we're kind of putting our, our scope and sequence on hold until we get that. But in the meantime, definitely incorporating things in, like Excel and PowerPoint and Word, when it, it, when it kind of seamlessly fits with our curriculum.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Myrna.
You're welcome.
And Nicole Whitehead isn't leaving.
I'm not.
Because she's going to stay for the STEM Program Review.
Okay. So, I'm very excited to be here. It's been two years since I provided a, a review, and there's been a lot of really exciting things happening, and I'm, I'm excited to highlight those for you. So, we're briefly going to go over some highlights of curriculum, instructional strategies and practices, assessments, new initiatives, and things to celebrate for the STEM areas. Home and Careers and Business are also included in there, as well as the Elementary STEM Club, which is, just completed our second year of running that, the week before February break. So, to start off with science, it was a busy summer, as you probably recall. When I did the summer recap, we did a lot of curriculum writing in the area of science. But one of the things that I'd really like to highlight right now is, through our Steering Committee, which we have representation, K-12, we decided to transfer or transition from a discipline-based model of teaching science at the middle school to an, an integrated model. And just to kind of highlight a little bit about what that means. Previously, even when I was a, a student at Bay Trail, our, our science was taught in a very segregated and discipline-specific model. So, for example, all sixth grade students studied earth science and only earth science. And seventh grade students studied physi, physical science, with most of that being chemistry, and, and not enough, in my opinion, physics. And then, in eighth grade, they could either do living environment as an accelerated course, or life science. That has been our model for quite some time. But through the Steering Committee, and teacher input, and lots of research, and guidance with administrators, we have transitioned over to an integrated model, and, and we have started implementing that this year. And it's really exciting. I've been in some of the classrooms to, to see this in play, and the students are really excited about it. I think one of the reasons why it's gone so well is, is rather than teaching things in isolation, they combine things together by themes, and cross-cutting concepts, which are a big part of the new standards. So, for example, I'll give you a, a sixth grade example. So, they, they study, their first unit was all about patterns and structure and function. And rather than just looking at that in terms of, say, weather, which would be your earth science, they then said, "Okay, we know that there's structure and patterns and functions in weather. Now, let's look at it in terms of life," and then they looked at all the different spheres, and then they said, "Okay, now let's look at humans. Are there structure, patterns, and functions in cells?" And then from there, "Okay, within cells, is there structure, patterns, and function for energy?" And that was the physical science. So, kids are really starting to make that connection, which is more real life. Science is more integrated. So, that's been something really exciting, making that switch over. Unfortunately, we can't make that switch at the high school, because high school has to follow Regents. And the, the Board of Regents has decided to keep it discipline-specific at the high school levels. But we certainly can do it at the middle school, and I look forward to, to seeing that continue to play out. Some of the instructional strategies that we've been working on, we've, we've been really fortunate in to have some professional development days dedicated for science. All K through five teachers received one full day last school year, one full day this school year. And our sixth through twelve teachers received a half a day last year, and two hours just this past January Superintendent's Conference Day. And during these sessions, that have been facilitated by myself, and amazing work by Shane Waterson, our, our STEAM TOSA, we've been really having teachers dive into what are good instructional strategies and practices for these new standards. Because they are different than, than just memorizing content. A lot of it is about giving kids the skills and the practices that they can apply, knowing that they're going to be faced with problems later on that aren't any more just recall and memorization. So, on the left, you can see a picture of, we had thirty-seven teachers, sixth through twelve enrichment teachers and special education teachers also joined us that afternoon. We're doing a, a little activity there. They're actually engaged in a phenomenon. And on the right, you can see that's a, a mind map, a concept map, that we, our elementary teachers did. So, after they did some PD with us, each school created their own concept map that we then attached to our curriculum maps, which I thought was a really creative idea that, that Shane had had. So, as for instructional strategies, the use of phenomenon in the new science standards is very popular. And for quite a few reasons. Number one is that it allows students that have never had exposure to a concept to, to, to see it. So, I think before, science instruction was just teacher deliver the content, and it always assumed that, that kids had background information, and that's not always necessarily the case. So, now, the, the method is to engage all students with a phenomenon. And then we're all on equal playing field, which I think is, was, is great from, from an equity standpoint. So, we use the five E model here now. That's the model that we have been sharing out with our teachers, K-12. And as you can see, the, maybe a little hard to read, but the five Es consist of engaging students, then they explore the, a phenomenon, then they explain, they attempt to explain by doing investigations, and then teachers come in and help explain. And then elaboration can happen. That's where some of that more direct instruction can happen, by the teachers, and then finally, the evaluate stage. The five E model is, is very popular. There's, if, even if you just Google "five E model," you'll find a lot of resources. And our teachers are really starting to, to grab ahold of that strategy and, and use that in their lesson planning, which is exciting. On the left, those students are from Ms. Lamanna's class, and they were actually engaging in a phenomenon right then, on dry ice. And then, we then connected that to weather and climate and the formation of clouds, which was really, really neat. And then to the right, we also have, I believe that's a fourth grade classroom, working on some magnetism project. So, assessment practices, you know, we continue to use common assessments throughout the district, and analyze data from those, you, through eDoctrine, as we have, the last time I, I was here, I explained that. I think the new, new information and, and things that are on our radar is that the new state assessments are now scheduled, and have been approved by the Board of Regents. What's interesting to note is that what has been the fourth grade science test is now moving to fifth. So, that has implications for us in terms of how we roll out our curriculum. We need to make sure, and, and we have now created a plan, an implementation plan, that all students will, we will be fully integrated by the 2021, '22 school year, so that our fifth grade students, and then our eighth grade students, will be prepared. And then, the, the Regents is rolling out in a, a, a different fashion. The earth science and living environment will roll, roll out first, the, the following spring, followed by chemistry and physics. So, we do have a district-created implementation plan, that, that teachers and administrators created together to, to ensure that we are, that our students are adequately prepared for those assessments. A couple of things to celebrate. We had some teachers just recently approved to, to become part of the Master Teacher Program, which is really exciting. And our optics program, which I spoke of two years ago, we actually, at Penfield, got commended by, for having the most number of kids participate in that dual-credit program. And in fact, our optics course was so popular, that we're starting a new one next year, in Insights to Optics, for students that are still interested in optics, but maybe not necessarily want to go through the, the college route. They want to go straight into optics. We actually have two students, Adam Sweeney, who's been a leader in this, is, he just placed two of his students in internships, that are then going to have, hopefully, successful internships that will lead to jobs with nice starting figures as well. So, that's really exciting, that that is another avenue for our students that maybe want to pursue that. So, moving on to our technology and engineering, we had some curriculum written over the summer to incorporate optics and the new science and engineering practices into our eighth grade technology course. And then we actually had a new course just start in January, Building and Repairing Houses Two, which just goes a little bit more, I, it emphasizes more on safety, careers, and specific machine and tool use. So, here you'll see a picture of our students from building and repairing houses one. They are coming back from a field trip, which is an instructional strategy used by our technology department. And to the right, you'll see that that's a student, actual student, drawing of a, it is their design process, and that is their stage two. So, that's from our eighth grade technology class, and it, and it's a student that I believe is, is building a rocket. And that was their second step of the design process. So, we continue to have the design process used through our eighth grade and our high school courses. Like I said, hands-on instruction is, is extremely popular, and other instructional strategies listed. And speaking of hands-on, here are some pictures of, you could call the instruction and assessment, because these students are actually building things and then assessed based off of their project. So, to the left, we have two students who are testing out their Mag Lev device. So, that's our magnetic levitation devices that all our eighth graders build, and they are assessed based on the speed of their device. In the middle there, wait, I have, I have the name. So, John Howard, that's his finished product for a cutting board project from the high school. And then on the right, we have David Delizer, who's using a planer in our technology course. So, hands-on, very much in use here, portfolios, projects, and reflections. And I did have a reflection I wanted to share with you. I thought it was really cute. This was a student from eighth grade who submitted a reflection that said, "Most importantly, I learned that coding takes a few tries to get the missions correct and perfect. Learning this will help me in the future, because it taught me to keep on trying until you succeed." And what a great life lesson that is, through our technology course. Some new initiatives and celebrations. I'm particularly excited about this one. This is a collaboration between our second grade classes and our eighth grade technology. And specifically, the second graders learned in the beginning of the year about the ecosystem, and, you know, our real problem involving our shortage of bees, and how that affects the ecosystem. And so, they took everything they learned from that unit, created PowerPoints, that then got sent, and some already sent, some are in the process of being sent. It all depends on our technology classes rotate through different things. But they were sent to our eighth graders, and now the eighth grade students, technology students, are designing a solution. So, they're actually designing bee homes. And each class has to come up with, there's groups of students, and they have to come up with a different design, which is then pushed back to second grade. The second graders then vote on the design they want, and then that's the one actually being made. So, it's really neat, because the eighth grade students are designing with a purpose and with real consumers in, in mind, as opposed to pretend ones. So, we're really excited to see how, how that collaboration moves forward. And that's a, a page from the PowerPoint, one of the PowerPoint slides that was sent to the eighth graders, from second grade. So, there's your PowerPoint in, in action right there. So, now switching gears, Home and Career and Business. We've had a lot of exciting work going on in those areas. As Jamie mentioned, we have a new CTE program that is in its final approval stages at the state, which is really exciting. That's just, opens up a whole nother avenue for our students, and a way for them to receive another credation, credential on their Regents degree. And we also have the work-based learning. We're in our second year of the work-based learning program. So, we have students placed out in different, whether it be an internship, or just work-study, that we have those two different programs going right now. Instructional strategies, we have, business simulations are very popular in our business courses. Real-life work experiences obviously are part of the work-based learning program. And in our Home and Careers, a lot of hands-on opportunities, which I'll show you the next picture. So, to the left, we have students engaged in seventh grade computers, and they work together as a group to invent a product of their choosing, and then do different things through Sway, and Excel, and PowerPoint to, to develop and promote that product. To the right, we have Home and Careers. They are working on the textile unit. On the left, we've got also Home and Careers. They are rotating through the nutrition and food unit. And to the right, we've got them cleaning, which I should show my children that. So, if any of your children say, "I don't learn that," that's wrong. Assessment prad, practices, here shows a great picture of students in our high school business course actually engaged in a simulation where they create, this is for our sports marketing class, and they create a stadium. And they go through different simulations where they set ticket prices, and parking, and food, and they hire people, and all to see, do they make a profit or not? So, that's one way that we assess. Projects are submitted through 365, which is a great learning opportunity for our students. Is, is that tends to be a really popular way of submitting work in high school and in college. And our Home and Careers have developed essential assignments that all students need to complete to ensure consistency across the, the houses. Some new initiatives and celebrations. We have seventeen students that qualified for DECA state competition, which is taking place next week, actually. It's in Rochester. Forty-three competed regionally, and that's up from- Forty-three competed regionally and that's up from, I believe, ten or I do have that number. Just give me one second. So we had, yeah, so the first year that we ever competed, we, we had four make it to states. We had ten last year and seventeen this year. So our students are becoming more proficient with succeeding in that competition. As I mentioned, our CTE program is, is, we've submitted everything. Everything has gotten the informal approval. We're just waiting for the final approval, but we're moving forward with that. Our Microsoft Office course, which we just talked about, is being offered next fall, which I'm excited about. And we do have a new pilot program for College and Career Retinitis Skills that's being, right now being implemented in our eighth grade Home and Careers course. And lastly, moving on to math. So math is also undergoing some standards change, similar to science, but not as dramatic because the next generation standards, which have been approved are, at least from the math side, not terribly different than the Common Core standards, which is good news for, for our teachers and for our students because those that are in the middle of, of a, of a change aren't going to be as affected as it was when we rolled over to Common Core. We do have a new course in, right now, that's running called College Prep Math, which is a great option for students that weren't quite ready to, to do pre-calc, but know that they want to take a course in, in college in math. And this will help them, especially if they have to take the Accuplacer. It prepares them for the Accuplacer. Our research and, research-based instructional strategies in math continue to be hands-on manipulatives, starting with very concrete concepts and moving toward more abstract. You can see that in play in the right picture there. And then small group instruction. You can see in the left, that's a picture of a small group, Laura Reynolds, working with a small group at Harris Hill. We also continue to use iReady in grades one through eight, which does provide each student with an individual online instructional program. Assessment practices, we, common assessments in, in all of our courses, K-12 for math exists and have for, for quite some time now. And standards-based grading or assessments are starting to be used across the district. K-5 at all four schools this year. And then we do have some teachers at the high school that are piloting that. Jen Bibber is one in particular that is using that. And, and we've got some more actually learning about standards-based grading later this week at a conference. And last but not least, we do have use of computer-based testing on the computer for mathematics. So you see a picture at the lower right there, a student doing math on the computer. We want our students to feel comfortable being on the computer and not have just that one assessment be the first time that they're doing that. So it sets them up for more success. New initiatives. We've got really, our biggest task in front of us is to do a gap analysis between the new standards and the, and the, the old. But like I said, we've really kind of done a lot of that and it, it's not that big of a change. And then we've got a new course being introduced next year, a Foundations of Geometry course that will be offered to students just focusing on the essential geometry skills to, to set them up for success. And what we'll be doing is really analyzing the skills that you need in order to pass the Regents. And this will be for students that maybe didn't pass the algebra first or the second time around. And so this will allow them, rather than introducing them to absolutely everything, it will just narrow the, the focus and allow them to be more successful. It will be very small number of students that will be in this course and it will be through teacher and counselor and administration recommendation only. And last but not least, we have STEM Club, which just finished up our second year. We had over three hundred students participate across the four schools and each week they rotate through a different activity. In the left, you can see, well, happens to be my nephew, but he's building a lava lamp. And so that was something that they did individually. And in the middle, I believe we have a Jaeger there as well. They are, and my daughter, and they were in a competition to see who could build an electromagnet that could hold and pick up the most number of paper clips. And that group did win thanks to Mr. Jaeger. And to the right there, we have some students over at Harris Hill. There's Kim Roundy's son building some structures. They had a competition. They were given straws and tongue depressors, lots of masking tape, and who could build the strongest structure and hold the most amount of weights. So that's just some examples of our STEM Club, which was facilitated by teacher leaders at each of the elementary schools and very, very successful for a second year. And that was a whole lot of me talking, so there's got to be questions.
Board members, any questions or comments for Nicole? Lisa?
Do you sleep? That's my first question. I was like, oh my God, look at all this crazy stuff. This is awesome. I don't really have a question. I really love the bee thing.
Yeah.
And I, I want to go. Are they going to meet each other? Like, are the eighth graders going to present?
That's a really great question. So for this year, this is our first year, the idea came, it, it was really a great idea that came from the eighth grade Technology Department because I happened to be writing curriculum over the summer and something came up about bees and they said, "Oh, we're building beehives." And I said, "Oh, we're doing that in second grade." And we really kind of brainstormed this idea. I think for this year, because it didn't, the idea didn't really become kind of cemented until later on, that our Scribner students might have the opportunity because they can just walk down the hall, right? But moving forward, all four schools have expressed interest. Then we need to look at busing and that type of thing becomes a field trip or we could set up something like I know they do here where third grade students come and, and high school, work with high school kids all at the same time. So there's lots of different ideas, but we're definitely going to try and get them to engage in person as much as possible.
Wait. Okay, Barb.
If you need a beekeeper.
Your farm, yes.
Yes. Are you a beekeeper? There you go. Well, it's also a Penfield graduate, so.
Yeah. I remember that guy, Chris.
There's a lot of attention right now on bees.
She was his fifth grade teacher.
I was.
Oh, wow. I was listening to the radio today and they were talking about honeybees versus, is it solitary bees or individual bees? There's, it's where the, the one, there's this whole colony that makes the, the honey and wax for human consumption. And then there's another whole set of bees that they're more, much more solitary. And then you're talking about bees and it's just becoming.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a very crucial issue because we know what's happening with bees right now. And then to get the students on those two different levels.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's a wonderful thing. I notice a pattern here, you know, patterns and connections.
Yeah.
Which was going to be my comment about how you were explaining in your first segment there.
The integration?
Yes, the integration there. And that we're not going to be carrying that over into the high school because of Regents, but it seems like that's a skill that they're going to be honing in on in, in the middle school that it's going to apply, even if it's not formally taught. They're going to be seeing those patterns because they will be exposed to that thought process. So at least there's that because I think it's a great thing.
Yeah.
To make those connections.
Yeah, I'm very excited about the integrated model. I'm, I'm really excited, you know, even for my own daughters as they, by the time they get to middle school, be fully implemented. And I think it, it will be really interesting to see, hopefully them making connections more naturally.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Which, you know, if you talk to some adults today.
As opposed to, okay, you know, so we just learned about the cell, so now turn the page or next chapter.
Right.
Let's, and, and with there never being a whole lot of why, why are they all connected?
I really think it helps with thinking more broadly.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, that's what's exciting about the new standards. Yeah.
That's what I was going to say because sometimes you can talk to adults today and it's like, don't you, can't you make that connection? And some people just really can't. But when you're exposed to it very early on like that, and then it just becomes part of how you think.
Yeah.
I just think it makes for, you know, just an overall better, you know, rounded way of thinking and, and viewing life and just.
Yeah.
You know, trying to navigate through all of the different complications that occur. And when you can see those connections, patterns and whatnot, it, it can simplify things.
What's been exciting too is, you know, teachers, rightfully so, were nervous because they've taught in the discipline-specific model for so long. But even just, you know, sixth grade started with just Unit One this year and the kids just, they just bought into it. And that's what really started building up the excitement of the teachers. And before you know it, we had teachers going, "Can we have release time? We want, we want to keep going. We want to keep going with this. You know, we want to keep writing." And that's what was really exciting was to see, you know, we had done a lot of research and had a lot of great reasons as to why we were switching, but we still had a lot of teachers that were real hesitant. But now that they see it in action, it's very powerful.
Wow, that's wonderful. I think that's great. Any other questions or comments for Nicole, Dr. Pottem?
I just wanted to say thank you and remind the community watching and the board as well as that Nicole has done a wonderful job stepping in to the Director of STEAM. And I think the presentation showcases the fact that it's not just math or science, but it really is, that's why it took her nine hours to present it. But it really is all encompassing in regards to how much work she's working on in terms of, in, in being able to speak and explain it and having been there and working with the professional development. So I just want to say kudos. I, I love all the stuff that we're doing in this area and especially when it comes to the high school optics work. And I think I'm looking forward to having my own kids come through and really see these shifts. And so thank you because it is a lot you've got on your plate. And you mentioned the TOSA Shane Waterson, who's doing a wonderful job as well, working with you. So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Nicole. You know, it was very extensive and it was very informative and we appreciate all the work you put into the presentation.
Well, thank you.
And I was just teasing about the nine hours. It was perfect. It really was. Thank you.
Did go over my fifteen, I'm sorry, Jim.
No, no, it's all good.
Get my lashings later. Certainly more interesting than what we hear next.
I can stay if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you.
This is where I get to say that concludes the special reports.
But now we are on to superintendents or?
No, not yet.
Let me go back. Oh, my goodness. How could I be so remiss? I'm sorry.
Livia.
Hello.
Hi.
So starting off my report from Indian Landing and school-wide, so a lot of the elementary schools, they celebrate the 100th Day of School. We don't really do that in high school anymore, but. And students were able to create projects with like a hundred various things, a hundred gumballs, a hundred this. And it was really interesting to see all those projects. Cobles held the Daytona 500 and that was in the gym, seeing who could run the most laps. Their fourth grade orchestra also performed for the Grand V Senior Residence. Scribner began their Stuck-on Reading Family Program and they held their annual Colonial Day celebration, which included songs, dance, and history by the fourth grade students and teachers. At Bay Trail, students were able to enjoy an interactive science assembly about energy with guests from Extreme Energy, who brought really interesting demonstrations, including Giant Snowglobe and a Fun Explosion. And then at Penfield High School, the Penfield Robotics Team held the 15th Annual Rochester Rally at the Penfield High School. Students and staff members donated blood during the NHS Blood Drive with a total of sixty-seven units donated to American Red Cross. A lot of the students are very excited today to welcome back Dr. Maloney and we, the Student Council made a banner for her, which was signed by students all over. This, I think this weekend, Penfield High School will host the All County Festival for the elementary kids. And district-wide, Valentine's Day was celebrated with the parties in advance. PHS had a very successful Career Day where students were able to meet with adults with professions that they were interested in pursuing and it was very insightful and educational for all of the students. Thank you.
There's a lot going on, that 100-day thing. That's exciting. It's hard to believe too. Any questions or comments for Livia? All right, well, as always, it was, it was a nice report, good and informative. Everyone's busy.
I, I was going to say Livia's very busy because we have to let her go now for the PIT practice for the musical coming up, so.
All right.
Thank you.
You are excused. Thank you so much. All right, now, student staff honors, how's that?
Yes, so just for superintendent's reports tonight, I just have a couple of student and staff honors. And then also going to mention our 2019, 2020 school calendar. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Stan Soucy to talk about the Boces Capital Project. We heard about a little bit last meeting from Dan White. And then he'll do Program Two Budget Review and Tax Cap Report. And so as Livia's walking out, I will share like I do every week that she tries to steal my thunder. So you already heard, but NHS Blood Drive, she does a great, she does a great job. She knows so much. But again, a lot of units were collected, sixty-seven units, that they say can positively impact more than 200 lives. And I missed this with, with Livia, but All County Music Festival, we had lots of students participating. I am not going to read all these names, but I will read one, Senior High School. Our own Livia is a part of the All County Music Festival. Robotics as well. Before this board meeting, I was upstairs to wish them good luck. They're heading to Montreal for their first big competition with the brand-new robot. That's under wraps there. It's a secret until it gets unveiled at the competition. But as she mentioned, the 15th Animal, 15th Annual Rochester Robotics Rally took place here at the high school Sunday, February 17th. I know that I think Lisa and Bill were able to get there. Am I correct on that? I think in, in some great pictures. And so just again, congratulations to all the work they're doing and good luck when they head off to Montreal this week for the competition. Also excited, I know that Mr. Otney was able to attend one of the competitions with our mock trial team, which is just, I just have a special spot in my heart for the mock trial team. It's still relatively new. It's, it's been around, I think, five years now and it just keeps building. And they're moving on to round three of the competition this year. The defense team won round one and the plaintiff team won round two. And now the mock trial team will compete, compete again tomorrow night at Brighton High School at 6:00 PM. And congratulations to the team members and the coach is Jenny Strong. And we have a, an attorney who's our advisor, Mary O'Connell. So thank you very much for the work that they have to do. And just as a reminder, mock trial, they literally get a, a case and it's just huge binders of information and they have to memorize the case and then they have to both be the prosecutor and the defender based on when they, when they present. And they go against other schools and it's, you know, it's a real attorney who acts as the judge. And then when they make it to finals, it's typically somebody pretty high up in Monroe County Courts who comes in to actually run it. And so it's, it's very, very cool to watch. It's really like a courtroom, you know, you're, you're silent and you're watching. And it's really exciting to watch. So as a fan of Law &amp; Order, it's much more fun to watch.
Question, when is that mock trial?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Oh, I'm so sorry, March 6th, yes. I'm getting ahead of myself. Thank you, John. It's March 6th, like the slide says, March 6th at Brighton High School at 6:00 PM. And you do have to get there on time because they shut the door and the trial starts. If you have to leave early, that's okay, but typically they.
Yeah, I got there late. Just looked, stared at, I guess. Sorry.
I'll tell you, as a board member, if you, if you know you're gonna be late, I know that Mrs. Strong is very nice, and she'll try to leave it, if I know, she'll leave a chair near the door, so you don't maybe have to get looked at. But they're, because they're in classrooms, and so there's obviously, you don't wanna distract the kids who are in the middle of cross-examination. But it really, it is fun to watch, and the kids are amazing. Also speaking of amazing kids and fun to watch, is this Sunday is the Bay Trail Science Olympiad. It's gonna be competing at St. John Fisher this Sunday. It runs from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM in Kearney Hall, right on the main stage, it's a big room. This competitive team has worked since about October to learn and train on 21 science events. And then the team, which is made up of 15 students, have to complete all 21 events from a variety of science content, solar systems, fossils, thermodynamics, engineering, and they do some other fun ones, too, like the duct tape challenge, where they have to build things. And they will be there all day, and that is one where you can stop in, leave, come back. Some of it you can actually watch, others, it's very academic, where they're actually in a room taking a paper and pencil test, and the highest score is how you get points for your team. This is where I love to say I'm a parent and a superintendent, because my son is in sixth grade and fell in love with Science Olympiad and has been training for three events. He got selected for one, so he will be representing Bay Trail Science Olympiad in the duct tape challenge event this Sunday. So it's really cool, because it's a club, that they are using their science and mathematical skills, and to drive your son to the library since October, every Saturday and every Sunday, so he can go in and learn chemistry and electric circuits for two hours each day, is not the kid I was in middle school, so I'm just really impressed. And I told him, he was homesick today, so I told him I'd give him a plug, so there you go.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. The board will be looking to approve this. It's our 2019-2020 school calendar. Those are all the dates. Once approved, we will put that out. This is something that the community has been calling Nancy Bradstreet and Sharon Urffits every day, 10 times a day, because they wanna know when their holiday breaks are. And just as a reminder for the board, there is a Monroe County Calendar Committee made up of superintendents, teacher unions, and the private sector, primarily the private schools and the religious schools. And they get together across Monroe 1 and Monroe 2 BOSI's to come together and design the calendar, really based on New York State testing days, Regents days, when Labor Day falls. And this is the calendar that pretty much is in line with the Monroe County calendar across Monroe County. So we try to be consistent through across the county, knowing that some people may work in one district and have children in another district. So typically, the breaks are the same across Monroe County, for the most part. There are some changes based on individual district needs. So while the board votes on it, it's a committee decision that we really don't have too much input in. Also, per teacher's contract, it has to be, it has to be agreed upon by the teachers' union, and so it has been. And it'll be an interesting year next year, because it starts early, it runs late, the last day for teachers is June 26th. The first day for teachers is August 28th, where we typically have a couple of days at the end of the August for professional development. And then we start with students the Wednesday after Labor Day, so September 4th.
But Labor Day in September 2020 is later, so they will...
Next year.
Correct.
Yep. And so we, and then the question that always gets asked is, you know, that December break, how long it will be? And it's two full weeks next year. So that's one that always comes up.
That doesn't happen every year.
No, no. Every seven. It just happens to be when a leap year falls in.
Oh, okay.
So the running joke with our calendar is every time we have a calendar, somebody always goes, but we always have that day off, or we always have X number of days. And, and the answer is no, but every seven years, the calendars typically look alike when you go back. So it's interesting. That is the end of my updates, and unless there's questions, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stan Soucy.
Kinda looks like there isn't.
I like that.
All right.
Thank you. Want to provide a little bit more information to the board about BOSI's Capital Project. We mentioned this, and I described a little bit about what they were proposing at a previous board meeting. We'll be talking about this again as we move along, but I wanted tonight to provide you a little bit of the structure of how BOSI's proposes to go about it. It's BOSI's Capital Project, so I stole one of their slides, but it's our capital project as well, and you'll, and you'll sort of see why as we move through this. So what they propose in terms of scope, and I think you'll see, we, I mentioned at the previous meeting that their scope was actually, you know, there's nothing super exciting in this. It's, it is, it is, when your roof leaks, I suppose a non-leaky roof is exciting. They're, they're, but it is, it is well-needed work. It's been many years since BOSI's has done a project of this kind of scope. So replacement, complete roof replacements on two of the buildings, on two of their buildings, and infrastructure work at the Foreman Center. You can see, in addition to some entrance reconfiguration, really, it's repaving, masonry reconstruction, some exterior work on the envelope, rooftop units, interior, exterior door replacement, the kind of work that, that we routinely do, they're proposing to do as well at the, at the Foreman Center. They also have classroom and program upgrades, so necessary equipment and classroom redesign for career and technical, as well as at O'Connor Academy for reconfiguration of the kitchen, the weight room, and the mechanical trades room. So that's work that needs to be done to accommodate the changing nature of the, of the way that they offer their programs and the kind of programs that they're able to offer. So all in, they propose a $22 million project. I said it was our project, because you, you've heard me say, and I think Dan White said, that BOSI's, we are BOSI's, BOSI's is us, it is a cooperative. And it's a cooperative that R-RWADA, which stands for Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. It's just a pupil count. It's a way of counting pupils. And we are, it's a way that's used for, for distribution of BOSI's aid and for billing in BOSI's. We are about 10 and 1/2 percent of the total student population in BOSI's 1. So we own about 10 and 1/2 percent of the total cost of that project, or about $2.3 million will be our responsibility. And you can see all the other districts are sharing in it as well on a prorated basis. It is eligible for aid, so it's eligible for building aid, much the way, actually, based on your R-WAD aid ratio, not your normal building aid ratio, but still eligible for aid. The schedule's different, how it works is different, but essentially, the money that we spend will come back to us. Our estimated aid on our 2.9, I'm sorry, $2.3 million share of the project is about $1.4 million, so the total net cost to the district is just under $900,000, about $896,000. That's estimated. We'll, we'll be distributing the money to BOSI's over the course of the next couple
...the Commissioner of Education and the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance. This tax levy limit represents an increase of 2.99 percent. And be it further resolved, that the tax levy limit plus all exclusions as set forth in the law is hereby established at $65,196,232. This maximum levy increase after exclusions represents an allowable increase of 2.99 percent. And be it further resolved, that the superintendent is authorized to submit any necessary revisions to the tax levy limit and/or the tax levy limit plus exclusions, should new information become available. The amounts will be reported to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right, policies for second read and approval.
We have no, we didn't receive any comments after the second reading of these policies, and so they're ready for approval.
All ready to go. All right. So may I have a motion and a second, that the policies, that the listed policies on the agenda be approved as presented?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. 19, or, boy, I'm back in time, 2019-2020 school calendar approval. May I have a motion and a second, that the 2019-2020 school calendar be approved as presented? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. MCSBA meeting, committee meetings, legislative was the only one that was held in between our meetings. John, did you, were you...
Info exchange got canceled.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
That's right. And I did not make it to the legislative. That was that terrible weather day. So nothing to report. Except you were there.
I was there.
See, I told you I was back in time here.
I braved the weather to make it there.
Yes, you did, I know. I felt like I should've done it, but it just was terrible when I was ready to leave. But anyway, please proceed.
So the, the meeting was mainly about the preparation for our trip to Albany, which will be coming up next week.
Right.
Monday and Tuesday we'll be in Albany. And we were talking about, talking points and main issues that we, that we cover, some are always, we always cover some of the new ones. There's also a discussion about the, the different makeup of the, of the state legislature this year, being Democrat in both houses.
Right.
So it takes, it changes how we approach things when it comes to speaking with the representatives, the ones in the Senate, who used to be in the minority, majority, or now the minority. It change, it changes what they, what they can do and what they can say. So we'll take that approach.
Okay. Very good. And you're going to the trip, right?
I am going, yes.
Thank you so much.
It's gonna be, it's a more, it's a smaller crowd this year. I think there's about 12 or 13 people total.
Okay, yeah, I know. It seems to be coming at a, it's always this time of year, but it seems like there's less people who are available to go this year. But I'm really glad you can go. You're a great representation of the district, and I appreciate the fact that you're gonna be there.
Thank you.
All right. And then yours was canceled, that's right. Okay. All right. No unfinished business, no new business. All right then. May I have a motion and a second, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:47 PM?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you.